Keep up. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, October the 26th at 6:00 PM. This is a reconvened meeting from our previous meeting with the Attorney General. We had a meeting with Attorney General here, and this is a reconvened meeting. I'd like to first start off a call or order in row call. Tim Lovelace.
Here.
Carl Ray.
Here.
David Eaton.
Here.
Steve Brady.
Here.
Rebecca Dye.
Here.
Oris Christian.
Present.
And Louane Wallace.
Here.
Ma'am, you have a call.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we're going to have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you have given us, and we thank you for allowing us to come out and be a part of our local government, Father. Father, forgive us where we fail you. Be with us, lead us, guide us, and direct us, in your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have the approval of the agenda presented before you tonight.
So moved.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we will have our presentation by our county administrator on the personal property tax relief. Thank you, Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the agenda tonight is the Russell County Personal Property Tax Relief. We had met previously on this, and this is right before the public hearing, so I wanted to give an update to the Russell County Board of Supervisors and Russell County citizens on the progress that we have made to be able to go through the personal property tax that we had given. As the previous board, I had mentioned these, and I have taken down what I had presented before. I'm going through the summary points, and then I'll go on to what we have worked on continuously. First, the personal property tax has to be legal, and of course, we have to be able to audit it, and it has to be fair and equal. And so the key points is between the legal, the audit, and fair and equal, the hardest part to get to is actually not the legal or the audit, it was to be fair and equal, and y'all will understand as I progress through this. So just to hit some of the quick point, I'm not going to go back into it because the majority of us here, majority of the Russell County citizens have been, you know, studying this. The first thing is on there that we had to deal with was the Personal Property Tax Relief Act. Like I had informed Russell County citizens before, every car, personal vehicle, car, truck, and motorcycle on the first 20,000 is discounted with the state of Virginia since the 1998 PPTA Act. So each year, we get a certain amount of money, and that's used to supplement. That means reduce your tax every year. This year, based off the inflation of the vehicles, everybody's cars went up, and that's very rare because, you know, very rare do you hear anyone talking about used cars going up in price, because usually the old adage is, once you drive it off the lot, I've lost depreciation immediately. I mean, that's just common sense. Anybody tells me differently, you know, that's, I have yet to see it. So, and some of them, the old joke says, if you go around, pull it off one side of the lot, pull it back on, it's already dropped that quick. So, so this year, based off the increases in the inflation rates of all the cars, and trucks, and motorcycles, and our money, which stays at 1.4 million, no matter what we do, how high, no matter how high the assessment goes, it still stays at the same amount. So it doesn't matter how higher of a level it goes, it still stays at 1.4 million, but the rate of reimbursement will adjust. So the rate, 1.4 million goes up, and then if it goes, if the price of the assessment goes up, it still is at the same amount. You've just got, it's spread, it pushed the rate of reimbursement down. So if the assessment goes up, the rate of reduction goes down. So it went from 48 to 37 because y'all's prices in cars went up. So the reimbursement rate went from 48 to 37, and we had to fix that. So other cars, I had mentioned before, we had to carve out the 17 different things that were in personal property, which we had to look at only cars, trucks, and motorcycles. Then we had to look at the legal part. Again, these is what public hearings we had, what taxes we changed, and when we approved the budget on June the 29th. These are the audit requirements. We got to look at the assessments. We got to look at the abatements, the linkscies, defaults, what we really pulling cash, and to be able to come to these numbers. Now, in the personal property in 2021 was, it was valued at assessed value of 250 million plus. I don't know if y'all can see that because I know the screen, and I apologize. It's a little bit out of focus, but I'll be pulling up some bigger numbers. So it's 250 million, that included business, the abatements, and all. This is a gross number. So again, here's the 22, which is 327 million. Now, to go into what I have continued to do since then, here is... Hang on just a second. There we go. Just taking a little change, time to change. Sorry about that. Okay. Now here is the numbers again, and I will bring these up into those thing, to a little bit bigger. There's the 327 million that we had, and of course, here is the 250 million that we had in assessed value. Those are assessed values. Now, how that applies is just like your house. Everybody here, your home, whether it's, no matter what it is, they're all different. They're all priced different. There's not a price here, and there's not a house in Russell County that'll evolve 11,320 some. It's priced the same way. Your cars are the same way because you got different years, makes and models. It's going to be priced differently. It is priced by the NEADA, which is hired by the state of Virginia. They pay them mega millions per year to set and evaluate these. It isn't the commissioner's job to appraise, he evaluate these. It's not the treasurers. It's not board supervisors or county administrators. I had mentioned that before. This is done based off the market value. If you went and trade your car in, and you pulled up to the lot, and a lot of them at the time got more than what the book value is. I know y'all had seen it on TV and the newspapers. Bring your car into us. We'll give you a thousand above the NEADA value, many times, and that's what they did. There was a lot of cars that were just sold outright. Actually, there were 771 that we went through. So how could we evaluate what real tax dollars were, what we didn't budget for? We did not budget for it because at the time, we had to remember, we had to bring the PPTR down, and when the tax books was cut on August the 25th to get a true number of what it would look like. Because if we applied a certain percentile to a car, say 15%, 20%, your car at 20% will be, you would get a different refund, or you would get a different refund. It would not be fair and equal. So if I applied a 20%, a 20% discount to a $50,000 F-150, that's $10,000 off. I apply that 20% discount to a $7,000 vehicle, it's not the same refund. So we had to work through the numbers. We looked at the assessment. You couldn't apply an assessment rate. You couldn't reduce the rate because again, if we go down in the tax rate, which is 195 on 100, you had to come to a percentile. You were still applying a certain percentile to your car, your car, and your car, and it would all, they all came out different. So how did we come up with this? And this was working through many long nights and working through many tax records. So this is the 2021-22 Personal Property Tax Master Tax File. This is your real record. It has everybody in this room's cars and trucks in it. It has everyone in the counties' cars and trucks in it. I have it blacked out because on two columns, because the names and the VIN numbers are private. These are just values. So, and what you will see is, as we were going through these numbers and evaluating them, that, and this is the difference in the cars, as you can see, we have cars that 1923 here. Anybody raise hands if you've got any of those ones. We counted for every car, truck, and motorcycle in Russell County. So we looked through 26,583 records, one by one. So if you'll look here, here's your 21 assessed value. That's a 1923 car. I won't try and not use that because that's not good comparison. But if I go down here, these values, and if you see zero in it, that's where they abated off or about it. So I'll get down in here to the numbers. As you can see, we have the value for 21. We have the current value of 22. These are on your tax tickets. This master tax file is what you get on your statement. These are the 21 tax. Here's the amounts. Here's your praise amounts for 21, 22. Here's your tax amounts for 21 and 22, and your PPTR. Remember, that's a discount. So that applies to the first 20,000 of all cars, trucks, and motorcycles in Russell County. So if I apply a 15% or 20% discount to any one of these cars, I can go through all 25,600 and some, and it will all come out different. Some of the cars that we seen, as you can see, the value on them, as you can look through all these records, some of them are in a negative balance. How are you going to apply a negative balance or a small percentile to each one of these? So if I go into this, here's the total value on these tax right here. On the first one, it was $20.47, $23.40. So now this is the real tax tickets. This one went down $7. So how am I going to give a discount to someone that goes into the negative? Now, now let me explain. Others 25,000, it was over 1,500 cars that went into the negative. So how am I going to apply a tax rate or a percentile to something that actually went down in value? Now, how did that happen? Because again, like your houses, just your cars, they're all different. Not every car and truck went up in value. Some of them went up more than others. So how do you get back to it? So after many hours of running the numbers, going through all 25,000-plus records, well, to come to a number, and that's what we did, to be able to get to the gross amount, so Russell County, because we, again, did not budget for it. So whatever we got back in taxes over all y'all's cars, we'll give you, back to you equally on what you paid. Now, that's hard to get to, let me assure you. So here is how we're going to do it. And it happened just from running, converting the assessments, the billings on all of them, back to each others, one by one, through the tax records, back to what I'm going to propose to the board, as you can see. Hang on a second, and I'll get to that point. When we started, the total tax amount is where we started, using that 250 base at 327. This is what our gross assessment was, was going to taxes, is what we abated, and that came out 19%. Now, I could not apply that 19.2% which we tried to all cars. So again, because I had to convert that assessed base, that is an assessment, to the actual convert it to budget dollars. Because remember, my first thing I had to do was carve out the first vehicles that were under the PPTA section. So we had 20,220 some odd, 23, I think, and I got the numbers, that met that first $40.45. So then, we had to add back into the $1.95 everything that was over the 20,000 mark, for a total gross assessment of 1,089,506. And then we had to calculate the annual delinquents to come out at a million dollars. Okay? Now, that PPTR that I mentioned before, it also has to be added in. So again, if you just do a blanket percentile, you will never make it. It's $204 above it. Now here is the actual tax records. So remember, I had 250, 327. Now, when the tax rolls came out, I only had 127,3 million in '21. I only ended up with 284 for a total assessment of 110 million. Then I had to back out the abatements, the business vehicles, and another thing, the 2022 cars. How do you evaluate the 2022 cars? We have 112 cars and trucks, that's an exact number, that is your make and model of 2022. It's the current value. How are we going, how would you give them a tax rate? Because we have 112 cars that are your make and model of year 2020, 22. So how would you give them a tax rate? Because that is the current NEADA because they are brand new. Some of them just came off the lots. Some of them are there. So how would you work that one? So we had to look at those issues. So again, I had to break up those numbers that were in the tax rolls, based off my estimate, based off the tax rolls. I had to take the 45, 145 out, was for the vehicles that are 20,000 less, calculate it back in. So this is the actual tax record of 1,047,994. Okay? Now, then we had to look, again, flat across the board, of the linkscies, and come to a total net amount of 96370. Now, remember, my number is actually higher because I'm pushing record by record, and that's the way we're doing it. So between the both amounts, mine was 11, I proposed 10% of the total assessment last time. Well, it's, mine, here it is. I had 10, 11, and 12, and I was trying to go conservative because those numbers for different vehicles move at a rapid pace. We had abated $14 million worth of cars and trucks out just this year. 14 million, that sounds, that's a lot. So if you average that out just to the month of October, you're averaging over a million cars per month moving through here. And to hit that number, that was going, that was very difficult. So if we go into that, again, if I use this number or that number, we came to these numbers on the budget to be able to go back, what we found out, to equal the 2021 base. So that's what I'm going to propose to the board of supervision. How do you get fair? How do you get equal on each and every one of y'all sitting here, and all 27,000, 25,750 some residents in here that owns cars, trucks? How do you get back to no tax? Now, to do that, going through the records, going through the evaluations and the values on this, what I'm going to propose is to be equal in fair taxation. The 22, calendar year 22 vehicle assessed tax base will roll back to the 2020, I mean, calendar year 2021 assessed base value. So when you get your tax ticket last year that has calendar year 21 on it, it's going to be the same in '22. There will be no increase. We're going to take those tax records that you seen on that thing for 25,000 some odd records. I'm going to move those money, those numbers back to your accounts, and you will end up at the 2021 base for value. Now, to fix the second component of it, I'm going to have to bring up the PPRA because remember, the state pushed us down from 48 to 37. I'm going to have to bring that levercent up because if I do not do it, here's what happens. Here's comparison analysis. If, now this is on a $40,000 vehicle. Now, if I go in here and say, I'm going to give you 20% off this $40,000 vehicle. So that would be, because I can't apply it to the first 20,000. I've got to apply that to the upper 20,000, not the first 20,000, and the total value of assessment. So if we go from the 20, and we're going to give a 20% discount, that would be 20 on the four, so that'd be 8,000 off. Remember, we was giving 20. Hang on a second. There's 20, 20, 32. Okay, I'm going to go back to the 40. That was, if this was the 2020, your assessed value was at 40, we give you a 20% discount with the range of 32. See how many discounts you're getting? That's not 20%. That's the first component. Each vehicle by vehicle will come out to a different percentile because each one of them are evaluated and assessed separately. So again, that was the first part of the formula. The second part of the formula is, we got to take it back from the 37 to the 48. So if I take that same vehicle up here, back to the 12,000, take the 20% off. Sorry about that. I'll have to lazy. I want to get a pair of glasses. See, I'm still 6% off even on in. You see what I'm saying? If I don't include this in it, you're going to be off by that 6%. And remember, we started at 20. Now we're down 30, and we're down, and we're missing totally the 6. So how do I get it back? Again, take the 22, what you have incurred, and I've already looked at the ones that's already paid. What will happen is, we'll take those 22 assessed values, and we'll push the 21 over top, load the master tax file, because we've already talked to the auditors and programmers. I will take your 21 assessed value and move it into the 22. I will move the PPRA back up from the 37 to the 48, to where it's equal. When you look at your 21 tax ticket and your 22 tax ticket, they will be exactly the same amount, car for car, dollar for dollar, and the county will not incur anything. It will be a 100% tax rebate, rebate back to every citizen. So now, in part of that, again, in part of the terminology, we go back to the audit and the legal, which the programmers is going to do it. Now, the ones that's already paid, our programs can grab the ones that's already paid. When we upload this into the system, it will create a credit for you. It will move it over into the accounts payable and generate a check refund back to you. There is no more, either mailed. You will not get another statement. This will be done automatically. If you decide to pay it at the window now, if the board supervisors approves this, when they come in tomorrow, as soon as, I'm going to say the auditors, I ain't going to say tomorrow, we're going to try to work with the programmers. As soon as it does, you walk to the window, it will have the correct 2021 amount. So that's the only way that we could do, car by car, resident by resident, to be dollar for dollar, equal and fair. You couldn't change the rate because that would apply to everyone, especially when I showed y'all, some of them went down. Some are, I would be giving a credit to a credit. You couldn't do it. You would be giving the big dollars to the big F-150s. I'm telling you right now, and I run the numbers however you want to run them. I'm not, I'm not, sorry, man, yours is a big 150, but it's just the way it is. Now, if, but also the last component in, we had to put the PPTR right back in. So I had to put it in to make the balances work. When I put all those in, that's how I came back to that 11%, does that make sense? Because I've got to put a dollar in to match your 2021 refund off the assessment, off the PPTR. I got to put a number back into the budget by law to make sure that your total refund of a million dollars goes to y'all all equally. So when I did it, so we turned around and we wrote the... Hang on just a second. Let me switch gears here. So here is my amendment of the county operating budget for year 2021, 22, I mean, 2223. That deals only with this movement. We have looked at, auditors look at it to make sure everything is in compliance, and this is within, you know, the realm of the board supervisors. It says whereas, and the rest of it is just first language. I'll be going to the middle. Whereas, the board supervisors, Russell County adopted on October 26th meeting, solely the calendar year beginning. Because remember, this is a tax year, so I got to back all the way up to catch you on January 1st of '22. This will end on December the 31st, 2022, because your tax is on a calendar year, not a fiscal year. It's on, from January to December. The appropriations and allocations, because see, we didn't budget for it, so we've got to put it in the bank. We cannot spend it legally. I don't care what it is or what amount of money. You cannot spend money that's not in a line item and being appropriated when the board supervisors approves the budget on June the 29th of 2022. If that number was not in there, you better not be doing it. If I do, I have to come to them to ask. That's why you'll see me, when we're up here asking for grants, I'll ask for an appropriation and allocation, and the auditors do look at that because you've got to bring it into books. It's like putting it in your bank before you can spend it. So I'm bringing this in to give it back to Russell County citizens. So the allocation of an additional 1 million, $2,401 budgeted revenue appropriations, that reduces the calendar year 22 personal property vehicle tax assessment to equal the 21 personal property vehicle tax assessment. That includes, remember, I got to include this one, the personal property tax relief, the PPTR of 11%. So I've got to raise it back up on Virginia's reimbursement rate from 37 to equal the calendar year 2021 personal tax relief rate of 48%, which is an 11% increase on all vehicles on the first 20,000 of assessment value on all non-business, again, these are non-businesses, this is Russell County citizens, for automobiles, trucks of less than two tons SUVs, motorcycles. A lot of counties didn't include motorcycles either, but we went ahead and included those. And motor vehicles with specially designed equipment used for handicap. I had, let's go out, you had to put those in there. Now, I had to also include a separate legal line item for the all vehicles that were a year of 20, your make and model of year 2022, because I can't go back to the 21 base because they're a 22 car. I couldn't back it back all the way to 21 because legally, they are a current year car. So, but they will be eligible for the PPRA. They can only, we can only take them back to the NEADA as of January. So if you've got, of those 112 that we have on record, if you come in, we have to use legally, the commission revenue, and we can take these one by one, the your calendar year 22 assessment for that 22-year make and model. So, but you still will be moved on that 37 back to the 48, but we still legally have to use your 22 assessment base. Now, the next part of the equation was, of course, whereas the county personal property tax tickets do, they will change from November 28th, or extend it out to December the 15th. Give everybody ample time. Don't get it in, give you time to worry about it. Give us time to get the programming in, and you can, you know, by the time you mail. That's another thing. If you mail it in, say if they already mailed it in after this, and they say, okay, when it comes into the treasurer's office, they have to put it in the system, your rebate will already be in there. What it will do, it will generate a list for us to give you a check back into the accounts payable. We were generating rebate. So whether you show up at the door, you mail it in, you pay it to the bank, or you've already paid it, it will go back to your 2021 tax ticket. So all eligible rebates will be applied immediately to the calendar year 22 personal vehicle tax records. That's where we're going to move you from the calendar year 22 assessment, give you the 21 assessment, and taxpayers that have already paid for the calendar year 22 personal property vehicle taxes, wherever you're funded, back to the residents immediately. Now, that is what I'm proposing back to, to be equal and fair, car by car, make model in year, all the way in year, all the way from 1923 to not, 2022. That live, that is not an increase in any car or vehicle or truck in this county. That's why I'm going to propose to the board supervisors to approve. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Um, so we're going to proceed now with the, uh, public hearing. So at this particular time, I will open up this, um, body to the public hearing to hear about the personal property tax relief. If anyone would like to comment on that, do we have a list of names, please? Do we have a separate list for the next hearing? Okay, all right, that'll be fine, thank you. First on the list is Mr. Charlie Hess of Lebanon. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hess. Doug Mays. Thank you, Mr. Mays. Sandy Hess.
Sandy Hess, sort of creek. Um, I've lived in Russell County my entire life. I have worked for the county in some capacity for over 20 years, but up until April of this year, I had never felt the need to speak at a board meeting. Honestly, I'd never even been to a board meeting that I can remember until March, and that was due to the noise ordinance. I'm sure that you all have noticed over the last couple of years, more citizens are becoming involved and paying attention to the actions of the board. I would like to say that I do recognize that you all do have a difficult job. Uh, you can't please everyone all the time. And I appreciate what apparently is being done tonight. But you all do have to recognize as well that some of the decisions that's been made by certain members of the board and the administrator, um, have spurred new citizen involvement. The latest issue with the taxes is the perfect example of why the citizens are becoming so vocal. Nobody likes to pay taxes regardless of political party. Uh, we understand that they're, they are a necessary evil to bring revenue into the county. However, it's the perception of how this took place that has so many upset. Uh, the fact that the county administrator had been warned that this increase was coming, uh, the treasurer had repeatedly tried to get the board to act, the fact that this huge increase in revenue was obviously hidden from the majority of the board, the fact that none of this huge revenue was factored into the budget discussion at all, the fact that the chairman, by her own admission in the last meeting, knew that the letter predicting the increase was included in the packet, yet it was not mentioned at all during any of the budget discussions. All of this leads to distrust of the board by the citizens. The county administrator likes to use the word fair a lot. And what would have been fair, would have been that the county would have been making on this huge increase. Uh, it would have been fair that the citizens wouldn't have had to went through weeks of worrying about how they're going to pay these taxes. Uh, would have been fair that you all wouldn't have went through all these long nights of pulling records and numbers and pulling your hair out trying to figure out what to do about this. That would have been fair. That, that would have been fair to, to the county. That would have been fair. But regardless, um, I do appreciate the fact that you all are willing to apparently do something, but my last point is, all this could have been avoided. All of this could, I mean, we could have been back in May when I sat through these budget meetings, we could have handled this back in May. Uh, the percentage of the assessment could have been decreased like the general assembly allotted, and all of this could have been, could have been avoided. But I do appreciate the fact that you are all doing something.
Um, next on our list is Larry Hughes, please.
Good evening, my name is Larry Hughes. I reside at 30 Leehawal Drive, Lebanon District Five. I do want to thank the board for allowing me to speak, and I know you have a tough job, and I thank you for what you do. But I have two thoughts I want to address this evening. One is a pro, congratulations, and the other is, is concern is the con from my agreements that I have, uh, that's created by the board due to this tax resolution. I want to thank Mr. Steve Breeden for standing up for our fellow citizens and their rights, and I think Mr. Lonzo Lester for his, uh, and his team for the, this new resolution. Even though, I understand that last time there was a 9%, it was a 10% for these production, but a 9% increase, so that really concerns me. But in the manner to mitigate, resolve this issues, they've tried to come up with this, it's great, but this, this is unwarranted, that, uh, we, we, we delayed this wrong because of the adverse auto-tax frenzy we have. And that's why it is a frenzy. During the past two board meetings, you were put on notice that you do have a critical fiduciary responsibility, that's the board, and a legal constitutional obligation to the citizens of this county. So we ask you to understand this, make, make sure you understand that we got, you got a job to do. With this being said, the board supervisors, you failed your obligations properly and timely addressed the tax changes. There were references in the letter from the commission revenue, Mr. Randy Weavens, dated March 25th, 2022. If this was not public and with foresight made available to all elected board members, then this shortcoming must be addressed by the board. There's no need to create anxiety for many of the most financially strapped and vulnerable citizens trying to balance their tax obligation and expenses to live the days in place very rampant economy we have. I'm, they always, people always say, you know, some people are struggling to pay the bills anyway, but now you create this problem, a lot of anxiety on people, it snow deep. I can get through it, but I got a lot of friends who have a tough time. That's not right. And again, as I, as in attendance, I'm, you know, again, I was not in attendance to know who was involved with the county budget committee hearing, but I understand that the new tax initiatives was never discussed in the budget review. My question, why was not? Was there a select few hoping to gain a tax surplus for some pet project? That's my question for you. You need to answer that. I don't know. If the board advisor staff or selected members of the board are withholding proper notification to work proper on a timely basis, here to, in this instance, it appears that relevant tax data was not provided. If this is a single instance of communication failures, you should convene into a closed session and ensure that this matter is resolved. However, if this has occurred before, this, this, then a desperate action must be taken by the board to prevent any such recurrence of communication without holding. Herewith, the board supervisors, you have put on notice, the man to report back to the citizens that you have addressed this erroneous and dangerous behavior by the hired staff or otherwise. As a taxpayer and citizen, I along with others have a right to request you, the board, to take positive and corrective action, report back without unnecessary and private human resource details being disclosed. Otherwise, do expect more decisive action by these citizens.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Pastor Don.
Now, I've thought long and hard about coming down here, and I spend a lot of time in prayer. I know that there is a God in heaven who hears our prayers, he answers our prayers, and God is good. You know, I also believe that God tests the faith of the community, just as he tests the faith of individuals. God gives us problems that we might work together to work them out. Sometimes I think we can all lose sight of that fact. The board is not the enemy. They're here to serve us. And I'd like to commend the board in your service to us on this tax thing. I don't know how many of you spent time praying about it and asking God to give our board the wisdom to prepare their hearts to work out a viable solution. I hope that you did. But I have been praying for this board, that we would have a viable solution, a fair and equitable solution. And I'd like to commend the board. For more, I'd like to thank God for what God has done in answer to our prayers. It's a God thing. Plain and simple. There are times when we come down and we speak and share our peace. Praise the Lord, they graciously hear our peace of mind, whether they like what they hear, whether they don't. But over the last two years, we have always arrived at the right decision, sometimes through much angst, but in the end, God is glorified. We arrive where we need to arrive because God is in control and we are not. So I just want to, just say a prayer tonight, if I may. Father God, we just thank you. We thank you that you are a God who hears our prayers, but more, Lord, you are a God who answers our prayers. You are a God who knows what you are going to do because you are in control, and Father, you are God, and quite frankly, we are not. So Lord, we humbly bow before you tonight. We give thanks for your graciousness and your mercy and your abundant goodness unto each and every one of us. Lord, in every situation, we all need to remember the admonishment of scripture that in everything, through prayer and supplication, make our requests known unto God, and the peace of God that passes all understanding shall guard our hearts and minds in Christ Jesus. Lord, if we are filled with frustration and angst, it's simply because we've not made our requests known unto you that we might receive of you the blessed promise of peace, the peace that passes all understanding, that peace that guards our hearts and minds. Lord, again, we give thanks for the promises of God. We give thanks that Father, you have said in your word that our God shall supply all our needs according to his riches and glory by Christ Jesus. Father, we thank you for your amazing grace, we thank you for your abundant mercy, we thank you that your mercies fail not, that they are new every morning. And Lord, as we have worked hard and as this board has worked hard, we thank you for the fair and equitable solution that they have come up with. Lord, we thank you that they recognize the needs of the citizens of this county, and we thank you, Father, that we can work together for the good that you have for us and the good that you want to do for us in this county. Lord, we just say, thank you, blessed be the name of God most high. Amen and amen.
Thank you, Pastor Don. Um, I'm going to murder this name, so I think that it is Cresha Tyson? Does that even remotely sound familiar? Okay. I apologize if I mangled it really bad, and I know I did. Thank you. All right, Jeff, last name I cannot read. Jeff? Did you sign it a paper?
Yes.
All right, you're up. All right, very good. I have no more names. Does anyone else in this room that did not sign up to speak, does anyone else want to speak on this topic? All right. Name and address, please. All right.
I appreciate all of you for what you do for us, but I do have a issue if it wasn't known by some ahead of time and wasn't made known to all you board members. And I mean, I don't know if that's what happened or not, and I'm, hate that I wasn't at this last meeting, but if that is what happened, and you all wasn't made aware of it, but, and there's been some action taken to where that won't happen again. And I do appreciate all you all, and I appreciate all your time you put in for us. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate you. At this time, I will close the hearing on the taxes, the personal property taxes, tax relief for Russell County at this time. Uh, next, I'm going to move into the next public hearing, which is the Honaker Red Bud Festival property. Uh, this is the Russell County Harper House project, as we're calling it. So I have no one's name on a list to come and speak publicly on this. Is there anyone in this room that... Okay, thank you very much.
My name, my name's Alicia McGlothlin from Honaker. Uh, I want to ask you if you guys will consider to bring this property back in and then give it to the Harper House. It's something that we really need, it's something that's going to be really worthwhile in our community, it's going to do a lot of help, and, uh, I've been talking, uh, with April and him about it, and I'm very excited because I want to volunteer there, I want to try to help all that I can to do, anything that I can to help to get this going, but I just ask you if you guys will consider this and bring it back in and give this home to the Harper House, because I think it's something that a lot of people, children especially can benefit from. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. McGlothlin, we appreciate your comments. Anyone else want to comment on this property? Okay, hearing done, I'm going to close this public hearing concerning the Honaker Red Bud Festival property, Russell County Harper House project. Now, before I go on to, um, I'm going to go on and listen to, uh, citizens' comments, because that's next, we want to make sure that if you did not come to speak on the tax relief, or you did not come to speak on Harper House, but you did come to speak on something else, we're have it, um, we have an open session now, three minutes for, for anybody that wants to come up and speak on something else that, that we haven't had tonight. Going once? Twice?
As God fearing folk, we have church on Wednesday nights, and it comes, it comes across to me that, and I hope from Pastor Don's, uh, words tonight, you understand, we're not the enemy. We pray for y'all too. But by having these meetings on Wednesdays, it does impose difficulty for us where we have to choose, I'd ask respectfully that the board considers picking a different night for these meetings. And when you have these meetings, once again, when I got here tonight, I had to sit outside, the TV's not on, there, you know, you can hear the sound, but if we don't have the big room, could you please allow that TV to be on so that way the citizens that can't fit in here can be part of the meeting and see what's going on? That's the end of my comments, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you making a suggestion, did not realize our TV wasn't working out there. Anyone else? All right. So then we're going to move on to the next part of their meeting, and, um, what's the board's pleasure on air, personal property tax relief?
I'd like to make the motion that we read and accept this resolution, because I feel like none of us realized this, and we're just, we're here to help our citizens. None of us want to put any type of burden on anybody in our county. These are the folks that we've gone to school with, we're kin to, we're married into the families, we go to church with, we go to ball games with. We do not want to put any undue pressure on this, and this is troubling times, and I want to read, well, Lonzo has read this resolution, and it will put it back, and I'm making the motion that we accept this resolution and put the taxes back for our citizens.
Second.
Thank you, Steve, I appreciate that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion with this board?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to say something. Uh, I'm, I'm sure you're under information overload, and I want to tell you, it is a complicated process. I worked for the last two weeks ever since our last board meeting, putting, trying to come up with some sort of...
I worked for the last two weeks ever since our last board meeting, putting, trying to come up with some sort of solution based on a percentage. At Lonzo, you know, proposed 90, I finally got it down to eight, somewhere between 85 and 80%. That looked like it was going to fit pretty good, and it would reduce everybody's taxes. But Lonzo's right. There are baitments that I can't take into consideration. There's also the fact that when you start removing, when you start lowering the tax rate, you hit that $20,000 range. Anything above $20,000 is taxed at $1.95. When you move below that range, you drop back to the old, I think it was 2006, number, which is $1.45. So basically, you're losing. When you move cars, when you reduce their value, and that causes them to drop below that $20,000 range, you're losing 50 cents per hundred, which has a pretty substantial impact on the bottom line, on your taxes, on the tax that you would, that comes in that we base our budget on. But I sat down with Lonzo yesterday, and he went over this with me, and I said, if you can do bottom line, bring everything back to the 21 tax rates, everybody's ticket will be exactly like it was last time. The 22 cars, we can't do anything about, so they'll just pay the tax. But he's going to come back and look at the lowest NADA rate that they can get. So try to give everybody as much a break as we can. So, you know, it's, I've been tough on Lonzo on this, but I'm going to give you kudos on this, because it's, that was a tough, and he showed me what he'd done. I mean, he apparently spent nights going over that detailed 27,000 person list of vehicles. So it's more than I had access to. Well, thank Commissioner Revenue's office, because they, I would like to worry them to death getting, generating information from me and Alicia for looking at everything. So I think this is great. We should have done it back in April, you're right, and we could have done this without, without having sent the tax tickets out. We could have resolved this issue. But that's in the past. I sure will, I'll do my best to make sure it didn't happen again. And other members of the board will, too. So that's all I've got to say.
I'd just like to say one thing. I'd like to thank Alicia, our treasurer, and Randy, our Commissioner Revenue, for their hard work in this process also. It takes a lot of people putting their heads together to get to where we're at today, and I think this is great for the citizens. Sorry. Also, one thing I did not say, and me and Steve talked about it also, we're going to have to do this again next year. And we're not out of it, so this same formula, we're going to have to keep these same records to be able to go back. Now, we have talked with the NADA, which they, State Virginia pays about $3 million a year or two. They do a million assessments a month. It's already dropped about 8%, but not every car and truck. Some of them's went up, some of them's went down. But again, we're going to have to go keep the 21 base until the federal government decides what it's going to do here. So, I mean, that's, we're going to have to deal with this next year. So now we've got the programs, we've got the model set up, we can deal with it next year and give continuous tax relief, because, again, we did not include this in the budget, so we're going to have to do it next year, too.
I think one thing I want to point out, too, is that the personal property tax relief is, has been a flat number. It's $1,437,200, I think. It's been that since they initiated back in, what, 2006? It doesn't change every year, but it was all based on that 2006 formula, $1.45 times 100% at that time. Now, the county has to reduce that number to spread it over all the cars that are eligible for it. So the more cars that you get coming in, you can see already we're down, we were down last year to 37%. Almost, we'd lost almost two-thirds, you know, there'd been that many more cars that come in that were eligible for it. So, you know, it's, it's not like it's a flat percentage. It just, you know, we just get that every year, and you got to divvy it out, and, you know, everybody gets a little piece of it. It looks to me like if we go back to 48%, the maximum PPTR that you can get is at $20,000, $139.20, which is a pretty good chunk.
And we need to mention that the due date is going to change also as part of this resolution. From November, from November 28th to December 15th.
Yeah, we extended it out, but, and we have to close the books out, the taxes account year thing. So we had to, you know, make sure the books were closed by the auditors, even though we did the program, give people ample time to pay it, and no matter what method they use, whether it went to the bank or... And because if anyone knows, and I'm going back to the previous tax tickets on the real estate, remember, we had to extend the date to that, to June 29th, because we were sitting waiting on the state numbers, because they were not here. So we're shifting, we shifted the real estate, we're shifting the personal property on the cars. And again, it doesn't look like any hope's coming up over the horizon, I'm sorry to say. I mean, if anybody's watching the news, you have to know this, so, I mean... But we're going to work as hard as we can to keep this as equal as, because our budgets, the board supervisors has level funded for other than increases in benefits and this and that, and the contracts is level funded for seven years. You can not, there has not been a rate increase in the eight years that they're going on. And that's an accomplishment in itself. Yeah, we do hit a few bumps, I gotta admit, but I can't give out more, you can't recommend more or recommend less to some and give more to more, if that makes sense. You've got to make it equal and fair, and that's what their motto has been, whether it's raises, it's fire across the board, everybody gets the same. If you're going to give out the tax, it's got to be fair across the same. The only one I caught on was the 22. I couldn't back it up to the 21 assessed value, but I can back it, we can back it up to the true, true 22 assessment and give them the 37 to 48. That is not correct. That was, and we took that component. Well, a lot of counties actually put it in, it's not illegal, but what, to be fair, it should be. And one of the things that we've seen, because when we started going car by car, it was, it was too much of a juggernaut. And one of the things that, if you'd done that, now you can pay late now, you still get the benefits if you come in and pay your taxes. But again, by law, and I'm not going into the treasurer's issues, once the due date ends, you're assessed interest and penalties. We got to do that by law, we can't, we can't, we don't have authority to change that. So you still get the discount, you're still going to pay penalties, interest if you pay late, so... And I know everybody's waiting on this, and we've been watching how they're coming in. So everybody's waiting to what the board supervisors does, and then we're going to run these through the records as fast as possible, get you, get records updated. If you have a problem, go to the Commissioner Revenue, go to the treasurer's office, they're glad to help. We'll run these records. Like I said, I got all 26,583 set here, so we can run you fast.
Okay, I'm going to use chairman's prerogative at this moment during this motion that we have opened on the floor and allow the treasurer to speak.
I just, I just have one question when I was looking at this resolution, and this is probably for Katie. This says that it will change the due date for the personal property to December the 15th, but we also have real estate with a due date of November. So does this resolution need to include real estate, too? Or, because we don't need two deadlines.
Yeah, I mean, it would, this, it would mean that the original due date for real property would stand, because that's not included in this. So if the board is wanting to change the due date for all taxes.
I need an amendment to that motion then.
That's a good point.
Yeah, so Katie, that's all I need to do?
Yeah, you just need, you need to make a motion to amend in a second.
I'll make a motion to amend. My original resolution here is that all of our taxes, Alicia, will be December 15th. That's your girls, your office will be fine. All right.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to amend to all taxes will be due at the very same time in December. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you, board. Now, moving on to the Honeaker Red Bud Festival Property. Mr. Eaton, this is your district and your heart. You want to give us a motion on that?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion that the county accept this property for the Harper House. This would be a home for foster children until we can get placement for them. I'm really excited. I want to thank Alicia and a lot of those that have reached out to April to want to volunteer and help in any way they can. So I'll put that motion on the floor.
Second.
Mr. Eaton, I'm sorry, we've already accepted the property back. We did that at the last meeting. This would be to convey it to them.
I'll make the motion to convey.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to convey this property back to, to the Russell County Harper House Project.
Yes, Russell County.
All right, we have conveyed it, we will convey it to her, correct?
Okay, it's, it's an entity. It's Child Abuse Reporting and Enforcement Center of Southwest Virginia is the legal entity.
It's their legal entity, and that'll go to them, okay. And there's not going to be any, like she said, there won't be any, expenses won't be on us. She is taking that in under her nonprofit, correct?
Yes, I mean, today, the only motion on the floor is to, is to convey the property that we've accepted back from the Red Bud Festival incorporation to this, this entity.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. At this time, we're winding down, so I'm down to board discussion and reminders. Any, Mr. Lovelace?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Ray?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes, ma'am, I just got a couple of things. I would like to, for the board to be able to recognize the retirees like Mickey Ray, and I think we had a lady that retired from Lonzo's office with a plaque. If we could do that, I think that would go a long way to show our appreciation for their commitment and service to our county. Some of them have worked here, I don't know how many years. But any, any other going forward, that, any retirees, I would like to be able to do this for them. I'd like to put that in form of a motion that we do that.
No motions tonight, remember? But anyway, we will put that on our next month's agenda, Mr. Lester.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, I'd like for the, since we're not making motions, to take under consideration, I talked to Tim Lovelace today. Me and Tim, we went through, if you've ever had an opportunity as a board supervisor member to visit our local schools and kind of get a gist of the needs that they have, I know our schools are working on some very large projects, but there are also some pending projects. The school system gave us some money back, and I would like to see us give them $75,000, that's $25,000 per area, to, Tim's got the list, he can go into a little bit more detail, and I'll let him do that. But on our next board meeting, I'd like for us to take it into consideration. If you go visit some of these areas, and this is all for the kids, they need, you know, some mulch areas and some curtains in the schools and some of those area gyms need those play mats replaced. And I'd like to partner, like we have in the past, with our school system to be able to make sure that we can partner with them and suffice some of the needs that they do have. And Tim, if you want to...
No, I think you covered it well, but we just have a lot of issues with, you know, sidewalks, guttering, old heating and cooling units in the classrooms that just, you know, just need to be replaced and...
We'll see that that's on our next month's agenda.
One more thing.
And I have lists from all the schools.
Got a list he can provide. Another thing I want to bring up, we talked about later last meeting, as far as this drug money coming in. I know we don't have the legal terminology or the restrictions that apply to that. But talking to some of the parents and some of the kids through this pandemic, we have a lot of kids with mental health issues. And our school resource officers are very critical, and I talked to county administrator about this, and we have a, now I think we worked it out, where we have a school resource officer at every school. But I would like to see if there's an opportunity to take some of this funding through that drug money that we're going to receive, to be able to cross-train some of these school resource officers. One, their pay is really low compared to a road officer, and I'd like to be able to see if we can't work something out with the Department of Social Services to have some classes for these school resources. Now, they're doing the job as we speak. They're just not getting reimbursed for it, or they're not getting paid for what they do. They are a social worker, they are a school resource officer, they do a lot of these jobs that's required of them. But I would like to see if there's a way that we could take some of that money, instead of sending that money back to the state through the Department of Social Services, seeing if we can't cross-train and hire them as a social advisor or social slash worker to help work. They're on the ground, they're working with the parents, they're working with the kids, and I think this would be a great asset. Plus, I want to take, I'd like to see us take some of that money to set aside for these events like they had for the Mark Marrow. That was an outstanding event. And take some of that money to be able to host an event each year in our school systems, to be able to provide a God thing to our children. And, and that's all I have, ma'am chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. That shall be placed upon Mr. Lester to run that little rabbit for you. All right, promise. Mr. Brady?
The only thing I have is that as a part of the program life resolution, we agreed to initiate a meeting of the public to discuss some issues, community-wide issues, maybe that group could work on. And I'd just like to see if Mr. Lester would go ahead and see if we can initiate that meeting. I'd be glad to work with you on it. That was, that was done as part of a motion or part of the resolution, so I don't think we need a motion of any sort.
Thank you. Ms. Di?
I'm going to steal a phrase from Mr. Williams that he used last, last meeting was, you know, we've never been here, we've never crossed this bridge before with our taxes. And just to let you all know, we sincerely do not want to put any hardship on you, and we will work with you all on any time that we can. We will listen to you, and we do want you to have all the benefits for the county. Yes, this is a hard job, but we asked for it, we stuck our necks out there, but we are here to fix it for you. Going forward, this is fixed for you all, and we, we appreciate your understanding of where we sit with this. Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Yes, at our last meeting, just before we adjourned, I said I was willing to do anything to help relieve the tax situation for the citizens, anything we could do legally. It looks like we have a post-up point tonight. I'm glad that we have, and hope that we can maybe avoid this later on, in the days ahead. But, you know, you can't hit it off a lot of stuff. It kind of creeps up on you unaware. You say, well, you all done this, you all done that. It's easier for you to sit in the office and say that, and us having the information, everything that we need sometime to take the steps that we need to take necessarily. But I do appreciate things come to this point where we can give you some relief on your personal property taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. And at this time, I will formally adjourn the meeting for tonight. I thank you all for coming. Have a good evening.